Okay. Good evening and welcome to the candidates forum presented and produced by the League of Women Voters of Northwest Wayne County. My name is Susan Rowe and I am the treasurer of our local League of Women Voters and your moderator for this event. Tonight, we welcome the candidates running for Livonia City Council. Voters will have the opportunity to vote for four of the seven candidates running for council. The top three will get a four-year term and the fourth gets a two-year term. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization. We do not support nor oppose any candidate running for office. The League does take positions, however, on issues after in-depth studies. You may see our name attached to an issue that we are advocating or opposing. The League of Women Voters is where hands-on work to safeguard our democracy leads to civic improvement. Membership is open to anyone who is at least sixteen years old and you can join through our websites. The League's main mission is to promote political responsibility through informed and active participation in government. One of the ways we do that is by having forums such as this one tonight. The League is also preparing a nonpartisan voter guide which can be found online at www.vot411.org. Holding a candidates forum by Zoom poses challenges different from an in-person forum. Only League personnel and the candidates are present at the forum. We solicited questions from the general public in advance so that we could ask them at tonight's forum. Questions were screened for clarity and those which included personal attacks on any particular candidate were eliminated. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates and not of the League of Women Voters. All qualified candidates who have filed with your city clerk were invited and are here tonight. All the candidates have agreed to the format for tonight's forum, which is as follows. Each candidate will be allowed a one-minute opening statement, a one-minute response to all questions, and a one-minute closing statement. The order that the candidates speak was determined by a random selection process witnessed by the candidates before the recording of this forum began. We will rotate the order of the candidate who responds to a question first. League member Valerie Nelson is producer of this forum tonight and also the timer. She will be holding up cards that the candidates know when their time is up. The candidate must stop when the stop sign appears. And now we will get started with our forum. Let us begin with our opening statement from Ms. Bazinski.
Oh, thank you for having me. So 2020 was a hard year for all of us. I don't think many of us predicted the events of the last year and a half, and for me, it was a real wake-up call. It was a reminder that I can't sit on the sidelines or wait for my boys to get a little bit older before stepping in and stepping up to get more involved and take action in our community. I've been passionate about democracy since I was nine years old and had the privilege of working for Senator Carl Levin. He taught me two really important things. The first is that everyone matters, their concerns matter, and deserve our attention and consideration. And the second is that our government and elected officials have a responsibility and duty to solve problems and address constituent concerns. I believe in public service over politics and would be honored to serve you on Livonia City Council.
Thank you. Ms. Toy.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters tonight. I'm honored to call Livonia home. Since I, since in my childhood, I cannot imagine living anywhere else. I attended Bentley High School, which our younger residents may not know where that was, but it's the REC Center currently and where I was my class president. I interned for former Mayor Edward H. McNamara and helped start the city's first recycling center. Our motto was to wait was too late, but the city council called it a passing fad. So low and behold, as a young woman, I started a small business with a friend, Colleen, which still we own today, Cardwell Florist on Plymouth Road. I have had an opportunity to represent our district in many capacities as a city councilperson and also as a state legislator and as a city treasurer. I'm running for city council because I care deeply about the future of our city and I want to. Okay, thank you. I didn't see the sign, but it's okay.
Mr. Jolly.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters. I'd like to thank all the people watching here today. So I am a husband, I'm a father, I'm an attorney. I spent the last fifteen years serving our community with the best of my abilities. I started as a court officer, I served as magistrate, and for the last six years I've been on the city council. During my time on city council, I initiated the first neighborhood grant program in our community that has funded over eight hundred community projects. I initiated the process and supported the Tadagean Trail creation and other walking and biking options in the city of Livonia. I've supported all-access playgrounds and improvements to our park structure, all while supporting public safety and trying to make this an engaging community. I've served for six years. I'd like an opportunity to serve for four more to finish what I've started, and I thank you all and I wish you all the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Centers.
Thank you, Susan, and thank you to the League of Women Voters. I have been a Livonia resident. I was born and raised. My family's been here quite a while, actually. We're on the fourth generation Livonia resident. So I attended Livonia Public Schools all the way through, started at Jackson, through Churchill High School, who just beat Belleville, the number-one team in the state, so go Chargers. I was an Eagle Scout out of Livonia Troop Eight Eight Nine. My wife and I chose Livonia to stay here because we love the people, we love the community groups, we love the schools. All works together to make a really great place to live. I've been elected three times to the school board and I'm excited at the opportunity to serve the community in a new role. I'm proud that I've developed a reputation of working with people from a diverse skill set, and I'd like to bring that to the Livonia City Council.
You're muted. Mr. Overwater.
Thank you. Thank you very much for hosting me today and all of us. I'm running for Livonia City Council because I wanted to find a way to serve the community where my wife and I chose to move and raise our family. I've spent my career in indigent defense, helping people when they need it most, being a voice for the voiceless. We live in a great community, but communities stay great by finding every way to improve and grow. In my career, I worked with judges, prosecutors, probation officers, police officers, witnesses, clients, and a number of other people in a process that's designed to be adversarial. I find ways every day to work with people and to find consensus where we can. And I want to do that here in Livonia. I want to work with all stakeholders to help Livonia continue to be the wonderful place to live and work that it is. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Donavick.
Hi. My first term on city council has been like any, unlike any other. Within a few months of taking office, council went to virtual meetings due to COVID. A few months later, my Army helicopter unit was deployed to the Middle East, where I continued to serve on city council from thousands of miles away in a different time zone. My council meetings typically took place between 2:00 AM and 5:00 AM my time. I continued to answer and assist residents with different situations, and I want to continue my work. I'm very dedicated to this job and to our community. Growing up as a kid, I attended Johnson Elementary, Frost Middle School, and Churchill Chargers, Churchill High School. Go Chargers! I grew up playing on the same Little League Oriole football field as many of your children. I love this community and I'm honored to be running for reelection, so I continue my work. I look forward to your questions tonight. Thank you, League of Women Voters, for having us.
Thank you. And Mr. Morgan. You're muted, Mr. Morgan.
And my apologies. Yes, thank you for having me tonight. First of all, I spent five years in the Marine Corps, nineteen eighty-eight through ninety-three. I spent twenty-five years as a Livonia police officer, so I'm very familiar with this city, familiar with the ordinances, familiar with the policies. I also was the union president for ten years while I was at, for the Livonia Police Officers Association. I continued. Also, my family has grown up here. My kids went to schools here in Livonia. I obtained my bachelor's degree at Madonna. This city is great. I love this city. I have it in my heart, and so does my family. That's why we continue to stay here. And I wish to continue to serve the city of Livonia on city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will now begin with the questions. And I must say, I, this is not my first rodeo, as they say, being moderator for the city of Livonia. And I always must commend, your citizens are really active in your community. They send us some of the best questions that we get for candidates forums. So with that, we will start with Ms. Bazinski. And your first question this evening to all of you is, what are the priority issues facing our community and how would you address them if elected?
So I think the priority is really being proactive. You know, as I mentioned before, we didn't expect the things that have happened in the last year and a half, and there are things we, you know, need to prepare for in the future. And we've done a great job being a wonderful community, but we've also been slow to make changes and adjustments for certain areas like our economy. You know, we were built around malls, which were fantastic fifty years ago, but now we have an e-commerce economy. We need to address that, acknowledge it. Change isn't a bad thing. Change happens all the time in all areas of life, and you can either let change happen to you or prepare for it. So I'd love to see us prepare for that in supporting businesses, environmental changes as it relates to flooding in particular, which has been a big issue in our community, and making sure we're a welcoming, walkable, engaging community for families of all ages to enjoy.
Thank you. Ms. Toy, same question.
Certainly. Proposed developments in our city, both for commercial and residential. We must see what value-added they're bringing to an area and get citizen input. That's very crucial as well as commercial input and what is the best fit as we explore that. We've had quite a few on city council in the last two years come before us, and those kinds of issues have popped up. And council's been very cognizant about listening to the resident as well as being accommodating to some of our developers in their needs. You know, the best service we pride ourselves in, and that's a priority for me, city services. Those have been challenging in these changing times, but we're continuing to monitor those and make those changes and study those changes as we move along for our future. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jolly.
Thank you. So as we are sitting here in 2021, the city is in a great position in almost every single area. The one issue that continues to stress us in Livonia in terms of city services and the like is really having an adequate worker supply. We've found recent challenges with our trash pickup. We've had difficulties hiring the adequate amount of public safety officials. We've taken each of those issues directly, and we've done what we could to encourage improvements in those areas. The other area that I want to hit to is Livonia Twenty-One. This reimagines, not to change, but to build upon the Livonia that we have today so that it is successful going forward into the future, to ensure that our neighborhoods stay engaging, that we are bringing the right types of businesses to Livonia, that we are partnering where appropriate with those businesses and with developers looking to make improvements and investments in our community. So I hope to continue to work on all of those.
Thank you, Mr. Jolly. Mr. Centers.
Thank you. Yeah, there are, there are several things we can do in Livonia. It is a great city. And I want to compliment everyone who's involved, all the stakeholders, the residents, in doing the Vision Twenty-One. As was just mentioned before, we have a master plan for our city now, and it had a lot of stakeholder input, and it is very exciting. Building Livonia in that vision going forward will make it more connective. It'll make it areas where there's more engagement. I think that's incredibly important. Also, we have a really safe community and we need to keep it that way. So I supported the contracts that the council passed. I was really happy to see that for our police and fire. Police have not quite filled those yet, fire has, but we need to keep that up so our shortages are addressed. And finally, supporting our small business community as we come out of this pandemic, it has been very challenging for them.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Overwaters.
It's just Overwater.
Over, I'm sorry.
No problem. So I think the primary priorities that we're facing at this point is we need to invest in our neighborhoods. We need to invest in the infrastructure that supports them. We need to continue to invest in our parks and the interconnected bike trails that were, that are starting now. We need to help local businesses because those are what provide, I think, the bulk of the value for each individual neighborhood. And we need to encourage the redevelopment of vacant properties. I understand that it's not easy to do that and it's easy to say these things, but that's something that we need to continue to work toward. We need to continue to fund our public safety and first responders so that we maintain the best police, fire, and EMS in the entire state. And we need to make sure that all people feel welcomed, served, and heard by city government.
Thank you. Mr. Donavick.
Thank you. First and foremost, a safe community is a strong community. Coming from a law enforcement background, making sure that we support our first responders. I'm fortunate to have been endorsed by the Livonia Police Officers Association and the Livonia Firefighters Association. Making sure that a community is safe for our children, for our small businesses, for our families is a very big priority to me. Supporting community development, our small businesses, Livonia has thousands of businesses, primarily small businesses in our community. Making sure that we partner with them, making sure that we support them. Most of them are local residents here in the city. And then also something very passionate to me is the revitalization of the east side of Livonia. There are a lot of vacant buildings, a lot of blight, and so for my time on city council, I've worked to eliminate that blight and eliminate vacant buildings in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Morgan. Mr. Morgan, you're muted.
Apologies again. Okay, I'm, I would be committed to being fiscally responsible and making sure everything is in order on the city budget. I also want to make sure that we keep our taxes as low as possible, considering we are the lowest in Wayne County. While doing that, I want to make sure that our police and fire are staffed appropriately and they have the tools that they need to complete their job. Also, the, you know, this is a great city and we have to have a good services. And we do now, and we want to keep it that way. Along with that, I do support the Livonia Twenty-One Plan and also eliminating blight and making sure maybe having a downtown area within the city. I think that would be great for the city and also our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our second question, and we will be starting with Ms. Toy. Some of you have already talked about Livonia's Vision Twenty-One Plan that has been put forth. Some of the, how, what are some of the ways that you work, you will work to implement this? And do you feel that any type of a, type of millage would be needed to move this forward?
Well, I would hope we don't have to do any type of millage. I would hope we can access, access what we already have and what we somewhat know. And we spent a lot of time interviewing residents, giving examples, having consultants come in to see what parts of the city they see and deem necessary for either improvement or revitalization. And so therefore, we've come up with some of those plans. Civic Center, where the city hall is and the library is and the empty court building is, are areas of concern as we look at that area, which is the heart of Livonia. So my, my whole thought on this is you have to listen to the people that are best served in those areas and those businesses. Because everybody wants to talk about small business and let's get more in, but we also have to watch what kinds of rents they're charging. And there's triple net leases out there, and so you're working for the landlord and not yourself. So. Did I go on a little too long again? So sorry, so sorry.
Are you in the gallery view?
I am, and I see all of us and I see you, but I don't see the woman with the sign. I apologize.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I am, I'm in the gallery.
Okay, all right then.
Carrie appeared though, too. I don't know.
Okay, Mr. Jolly, the same question.
Thank you very much. So Livonia Twenty-One is very near and dear to all of us. The people on city council and a lot of people in our community worked very diligently to create that process and that plan, which was really Livonia's first master plan since the nineteen eighties. What it does is it allows us different opportunities to develop properties throughout the city. We recently did take an action towards a step of accomplishment when we passed a new zoning ordinance that allows us to address today's needs and today's wants of our community and developers by sometimes allowing less parking spots, sometimes better utilizing our space, and kind of taking off restrictions that we've kind of outgrown as a community and as a society in general. You know, Livonia is really, it's a city, but it's, it's got the heart of a small town. So when we look at something like Livonia Twenty-One, what we want to do is reinvigorate the entire city and have many little city centers throughout the city. So everybody is close to a downtown or an engaging environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Centers.
Thank you. We're, we have a really unique opportunity, and it's an opportunity to kind of accelerate our work with Livonia Twenty-One. There's a lot of federal, state, county money out there as a result of COVID. My day job is a legislative staffer, so I work with the state budget. So I think I'm in a good position to kind of know where those opportunities are so we can take advantage of them. Federally, we've got nine million dollars in American Rescue money coming. And I know the mayor's office would like to use three million of that toward the senior center and others toward trails and bike paths. And what's really exciting about that is those projects can spur even more economic development, makes our city more connective, but, and livable, and it serves a purpose with the Vision Twenty-One. So I'd be really excited to work on this project even further.
Sorry, Mr. Overwater.
Thank you. So to answer the initial question, I would certainly hope that we would be able to push the Livonia Twenty-One Plan forward in a way that doesn't involve a new millage or any additional funds. As others have indicated, there's a lot of federal funding available, and we need to make sure that we're using all of that as, as much as possible and as intelligently as possible. We need to make sure that we invest the funds that we have and that we can get into our neighborhoods. Progress in those neighborhoods will beget growth. It will encourage more people to move into these neighborhoods and allow the city to continue to grow, to continue to grow revenue, and allow us to continue that redevelopment. We need to utilize the spaces that we have. We need to work together with the mayor, with the other areas of city government, and with the stakeholders, the businesses, and the residents in order to move the plan forward in the way that does the most good with the least amount of resources that we could use.
Thank you. Mr. Donavick.
Thank you. Livonia Vision Twenty-One is exciting because it's, it's the modernization of our current zoning. I think Livonia's done a great job of attracting large businesses, small businesses. We've done a good job of investing our parks, investing in different programs of the community. Livonia Vision Twenty-One really helps us look at zoning differently, which maybe can attract different sorts of developments that we didn't necessarily think about. I look forward to how Livonia Vision Twenty-One can eliminate some of the vacancies we've had in the community, but kind of also think differently about the new businesses that are coming to our community. Thank you.
I'm the one who keeps forgetting to unmute. Mr. Morgan.
Yes, me too. Yes, thank you. You know, the Vision Twenty-One Plan, Livonia Twenty-One Plan, that it seems very exciting. I think it would be a great thing for the community. And I believe that working with our, the officials in the department heads and the state and the government, the federal government, and getting as much money as we can, and it would be a great plan to implement as quickly as possible using the money that is provided to us. But we, once again, we have to be fiscally responsible, make sure that we do it in the right way, make sure that this plan doesn't put the city into any type of financial hardship and/or raise our taxes in the city of Livonia. But I am very much in favor, favor of it, and I would love to work on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bazinski.
So I'm excited about Vision Twenty-One, as many of us are. I think the zoning ordinance is a fantastic start. One of the number-one things people bring up is the downtown Livonia, and I think identifying three micro downtowns is really exciting and offers a lot of opportunity for how Livonia can create an environment that people are looking for. But I do think the cost of it is really important that we have these discussions on, so whether or not we need a millage. How are we prioritizing this? It seems to be something that a lot of people want. Well, how much are we willing to invest in it? The senior center is estimated that the new addition onto the REC Center is thirteen million dollars. So three million dollars is fantastic, but that's a ten-million-dollar gap. So for me, it's about transparency and letting citizens and voters understand what are the costs and what are the benefits? And what do we really want in our community? So for me, it's all about transparency, looking at the numbers and making sure people understand how we're moving Livonia forward.
Okay, thank you. Our next question, we will begin with Mr. Jolly. And the question is, do you believe that the elections in the city of Livonia are conducted with integrity, that they are secure and can be trusted as reflecting the responses of the voters? And will you accept the results of this election? And we begin with, as I said, Mr. Jolly.
Thank you, ma'am. I absolutely believe in the integrity of our election system in Livonia. I accept the results. I, I think there are very few people who serve as diligently as those people who are out there working the polls to ensure that we have open and fair elections on a consistent basis throughout our history. I think it's absurd to, well, it's absurd to go down the road of causing unnecessary questions when there hasn't been any kind of proof of these kind of claims. I know our city clerk, Susan Nash, her team within city hall and the city clerk's office, and all of those people who are out there watching the polls have consistently not only done their jobs well or provided a great service to democracy. I absolutely accept and support our election results, and there's no question in my mind that our, our team is doing a good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Centers.
Yes, I think they're safe and secure. I think people can feel very comfortable going out to the polls. I also think that I will accept the election results, but you know, and ultimately, we have a really great clerk's office. Jim had just mentioned that Susan Nash is phenomenal. She's the president of the Clerks Association for Wayne County. She does a really nice job with our elections. There's been no reason to doubt that our elections are, are good and safe here, and I am completely confident that we'll have accurate results.
I absolutely believe in the integrity of this election and every election that we've had. The people who work the polls are extremely dedicated. My experience working with Susan Nash in the city clerk's office in the course of this campaign has been extraordinary. As an attorney, I've worked with many government offices in multiple states, and the city clerk's office here runs like a clock. It's exceptional. So I have absolutely no doubt that this election and every election that we've had in Livonia has, has been perfectly secure, and I will happily accept the results of the election. And I will happily accept the results of the election.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan.
Thank you. Livonia is fortunate. We have so many great volunteers that work the polls every single election. Uh, we have a dedicated clerk's office. Uh, clerk Nash is, does a wonderful job and all the people that work in the clerk's office work really hard. To make sure that all of our elections are safe and secure. I support our Livonia elections and the outcome of our Livonia elections. Again, I know that each person in the clerk's office and all of our volunteers are doing everything, everything they can to make sure. Uh, that the integrity of our elections are upheld. I understand people want to make sure that elections are safe and secure. And, and I know, and I can tell people that when you come to Livonia, you're going to get exactly that. Every vote matters. Some countries don't have the right to vote and some countries do deal with voter integrity issues, but, but not in Livonia. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan.
Uh, yes, I, I absolutely uh believe that uh. Uh, the integrity of our voting system here in Livonia is safe and secure. I believe that uh, the clerk's office, they are uh above reproach. They're, they're very upstanding individuals. All the people that are selected to work in the uh polling areas and the representatives there. Um, they are upstanding people. Um, I think that uh here. There uh will be absolutely no problems and I will absolutely accept whatever the outcome of the. Election is. Thank you.
I will also accept the election results and I have absolute uh faith and confidence in our voting system here in Livonia and our clerk's office. I um was a volunteer adjudicator for the twenty twenty election and it changed the way I looked at elections in this country. I thought I knew what voting looked like in America and until you are part of that system and a volunteer, um you really have no idea. So it was a, a very educational experience for me and one I would recommend to anyone um. At any time, really sign up to vote, make it, you know, on your bucket list because it's worth it, especially here in America to celebrate, you know, our democracy and our ability and freedom. Um, to vote for our representatives.
Yes, through the year.
Yes, thank you.
Through the years, our clerk's office has been and has excelled in exemplary um elections. I, uh, there hasn't been a lot of problems as I've seen across the state where there. Might have been some suspicions and some problems as, as time went on. But um, I am answering yes to all the questions you asked. And I will tell you, that is one of the hardest working departments, even with COVID going on. Those staff came in and they were there daily as their boss Susan Nash was as well. So I commend her. I've ridden in the current election day with her. And they all do a very superior job. And I'm going to say that because they're going to count our votes very shortly.
Thank you. Okay, the next question will begin with Mr. Centers. And the question is, our country is in the middle of a serious global pandemic. What is your position on encouraging people to get the COVID nineteen vaccine? And do you believe that masks work to help stop the spread of COVID? And if so, how will you encourage Livonia residents, workers, et cetera, to wear masks? Would you support a mandate?
Okay, there's a, there's a lot there. Um, the first thing, uh, I, I think uh the vaccines. There's about, been about two point three uh billion doses I, I heard recently given out and. Uh, we have seen that the vaccine can be very effective. There are very few breakthrough cases. Uh, there, it's not impossible, but uh it is unlikely. I think the city did a really nice job uh of organizing early. Uh, I know this was a, a real priority for Mayor Brosnan. The vaccine clinics were extraordinary. Uh, I had the opportunity to volunteer. I also brought out lunch to volunteers on a different time. Uh, it was uh a really help to a lot of our, our citizens in, in Livonia. Uh, as far as masking goes, uh, it's interesting. There's just a recent study. It was like Yale's. Three of our premier research institutions, I believe Yale was one of them. Uh, it was uh about three hundred thousand participants. And the positive results for masking.
Um, as I was saying, then finish that up in your closing statement if you wish. Um, okay, our next person for that is Mr. Overwater.
So I'm an attorney. I'm not a doctor. I'm not a scientist. So I rely on the expertise of people who've studied these things and who know more about it than I do. Masks work. That's what they tell us. I believe that. Vaccines work. We know that because I assume none of us here have polio or smallpox because they work. Would I support uh a requirement that people wear masks, a requirement that people get vaccinated? It's not an easy decision to make, but potentially, yes, I would. Um, it's something that we, I'd have to look seriously at and weigh the pros and cons and listen to the expertise of people who know more about it than I do. But we require vaccinations for other diseases for all sorts of engagement and different kinds of things. And requiring somebody to wear a mask, it just isn't that big of an imposition if you consider what we're protecting people from. And protecting our hospital workers. So uh, yes, I would support those.
Thank you, Mr. Overwater. And Mr. Donovan, same question.
As a local elected official, I would never support a mandate. Uh, whether it be a vaccine mandate or a mask mandate. I'm not a medical professional and I would not be supporting such a mandate. Uh, like I said, I'm not a medical professional. So if you think uh you and your doctor think getting a vaccine is right for you. Then that's right for you. If you and your doctor, your medical professional think that isn't right for you, then that isn't right for you. I'm not a doctor. I'm not a scientist. I'm a, I'm a city council person. I support people's individual medical private decisions between them and their doctor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Morgan.
Yes, um, over the past year, there's uh with COVID, uh, it's just been so disruptive. Um, but answering the question that you've uh proposed or posed. Um, I would not support any type of mask or vaccine mandate. And um, yes, I am not a medical professional either. But I will say that mandates like that are eroding away at our freedoms. As an American. And you should be able to choose what happens to your body. Now, mind you, if someone uh wants to deny you access to their building because they want a mask, well, that's. That's their right. Um, if your doctor um recommends the shot. Then it would be your decision, but I would never allow that to be a mandate. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bazinski.
Yes, so um, I think the vaccine is really personal and it's really hard. Um, so in terms of how do we encourage people to get it, I think we have to um, listen and uh have hard conversations with people. Be compassionate and understanding because a lot of people are coming from this from different experiences and perspectives and we need to respect that. At the same time, I'm vaccinated. Um, I believe in the vaccine. I trust our medical professionals and um, and medicine. Uh, I also wear masks. My kids are too young to be vaccinated and I worry about their safety and I think we really need to consider. Others when we make these personal decisions, particularly when it comes to mask wearing, um, as it, it, it is not. Providing bodily harm, but it can provide protection for those who have no other alternative. So I am um, open. I don't see it coming before city council realistically, but if it did, I would support a mask mandate.
Thank you, Ms. Toy.
Thank you very much. I did receive the vaccine. I did have a breakthrough case. I did have COVID. I also had the infusion, uh, the BAM treatment that gave me antibodies because of my age as well. And I believe in the medical science. Uh, you don't want to get COVID. So if that means that's your choice, we shouldn't force, we shouldn't mandate. You need to talk to your doctor. And so therefore, um, I would not be one to make judgments on people's health issues. Everyone has different ones. As far as a mask goes, I think it's important to distance from each other. And I do think it's important to wear a mask when at all possible. Some people have breathing problems and cannot. So that is up to them. So then maybe they should remain other places than in large crowds. So you have to judge for yourself. We are adults and uh, that would be my answer to those kinds of things. There is conflicting data. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Jolly.
Thank you. So like many people in our community and across the state and the country and the world, uh, I, like Laura, also had COVID. Everybody in my house did. Um, so I know how, how difficult it can be. Luckily, I didn't have an awful case. Neither did anybody in my family. Uh, but I was there day one when the city of Livonia started offering vaccinations at the senior center to our residents. Cause I thought it was that important to provide some sense of safety and protection to our residents. Uh, I am personally vaccinated. For me, it was the right choice. I think when we look at uh the scope of what might be coming before city council. Vaccination mandates, mask mandates will not be decided by our city council. But I would encourage everybody to get those vaccinations, to wear masks if they feel it's appropriate. And to be considered of other people, if, if they're around people who would like to have uh them wear masks. Um, and hopefully this will all end soon and we can, you know, celebrate together like we used to. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, the next question, go, we will start with Mr. Overwater. And the question is, this summer, our weather has caused numerous power. Outages in flooded areas of Livonia. What would you propose to better protect our city's infrastructure from storms in the future?
Similar to not being a doctor, I'm also not a civil engineer. Um, so the first step would be to speak to the experts who know more about these things. I have a very limited understanding. I know retention ponds help, uh, obviously, um, improving our storm drains and, and, and those sorts of things help with the uh rainwater. As far as the power outages, I know DTE was in my backyard cutting down all of my trees uh just last week. So I know they're hard at work and trying to make that happen. Um, but the, the simple answer is that I. I believe in fixing things right the first time. Um, I've spent too much time working on cars and, and, and motorcycles of my own. And, and making those mistakes and having to redo it. Um, so. Uh, you talk to people who know more about this than you do. You find the plan that makes the most sense. And you find a way to pay for it because you're going to pay for it one way or the other. The weather is coming. It's going to continue to get worse. It's not getting better. We need to plan for this. Um, so that's the way I would approach it.
Thank you. Mr. Donovan.
Uh, on city council, we've recently had committee meetings uh discussing this exact issue flooding in our community. Fortunately, Livonia uh is, is doing a good job of managing flooding compared to some of our local communities, uh but it needs to get a lot better. Whether that be uh working with the county to make sure that when new developments come in, underground retention systems are properly installed. So that we can make sure we don't add more stress on our current infrastructure. Uh, making sure that's when you're building new developments, the grading is correct so that we're not having low spots that collect a lot of water. I know unfortunately on my street, we had some flooding and it's really frustrating and, and it's, it's dangerous. So how we can make sure we, we keep our underground retention systems clean, uh clear of debris. Uh, that become, that's an ongoing issue and a lot of folks are working really hard in the city. When it comes to trees and DTE, I too have had some trees cut down in my backyard and I'm hoping that uh the issues get better. But I think Livonia just has so many trees and, and I love that, but it's also sometimes a detriment to our community because the trees are the leading cause. Of power outages in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Morgan.
Yes, um, I've uh seen that uh we've had a lot of issues with flooding, especially under some of our bridges. Like on Fergington and Merriman. And uh, it then in a lot of these subdivisions. And um, I think working with the county to make sure those storm drains are cleaned out. Uh, on a regular basis, along with the city uh DPW. Finding out what can be done to alleviate the issues of water backup and flooding in our community. Also, um, DTE, um, some of these areas need to be upgraded. We could work as uh, as a city council member to try to have DTE look at some of these areas. And maybe upgrade some of the transformers and maybe put in some underground wiring. Uh, so we work very hard with the local um, power, uh, DTE and DPW.
Thank you. Ms. Bazinski.
This is an issue that I've been educating myself a lot about over this summer. And I attended the recent committee of the whole meeting on flooding and one thing that really stood out is our city engineers said we uh budget zero dollars. Towards our stormwater system in the city right now. Zero dollars. Currently, any work that's being done in that area is grant funded. It's, it's unacceptable where it, we're not in a better position than other communities. We're just luckier than them at this time. In two months, we've had three one hundred year floods. It's not going to change. We get more rain every single year. And it's going to continue to impact our neighborhoods unless we take substantive action. Our DPW heads, our city engineer and our park and director, directors understand what needs to be done. And the city council and the city itself needs to support their efforts to make sure that our communities are protected from the weather moving forward.
Again, Ms. Toy.
Thank you. Um, had, it has been said about the trees, keeping the branches trimmed where residents are able to do that. Um, also, if they're able to get to their storm drain or their ditches, if you will, in some of our older neighborhoods. To keep those cleaned out of your weeds, of your leaves, of debris, that helps immensely. Um, we are, you know, meeting with DTE reps. I know the administration has as well. And we're looking at various stages of what we need to do as far as all the rain we've been having as well. So we're developing plans as we move forward and it looks very promising. It's just the weather doesn't always cooperate. So we're going to do the best we can. And as we do new developments, the grades of the property, we have to watch how those homes or businesses are built. Because when they're built higher, the water goes down and floods um other places. So that's another consideration as we do developing in our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alright, uh, Mr. Jolly.
Thank you, ma'am. So I'll take the DTE aspect of this first. DTE obviously has a monopoly on the power situation in Livonia. The authority to regulate them really sits with our legislatures in Lansing. We recently had meetings with DTE and we got re- reassurances and assurances that things were going to get better. But we need to call upon our state authorities and pushes a city on those state authorities to regulate them appropriately and hold them accountable. For the issues that have taken place. In regards to the flooding situation, I called that meeting. The, of the city council recently to look into the flooding situation in Livonia. We did have three hundred year storms in the last uh couple of months here. Our system is only built for a hundred year storm, once every hundred years. So we need to take these in, things into an account. The best way city council can do that is by efficiently and effectively looking at site plans that come before us. And making the investments where necessary on city lands and public lands to account for the water.
Mr. Centers.
Thank you. Yeah, uh, the DTE situation is uh very, very frustrating. I met with them two weeks ago, their government relation folks, along with one of their engineers. Uh, they are offering some solutions now. They're. Uh, have already moved up some tree trimming. Uh, that was uh proposed for later in the year. They're adding more tree trimming. There's two substations that they're going to do some work on. Uh, but all this is reactive. Uh, they had an opportunity to be proactive. But that costs money and it is very unfortunate that uh they were not proactive and we need to hold them accountable to be proactive going forward. There, it is not just a comfort issue. It is a safety issue. I, I know several people who are on oxygen who need that power. Uh, to survive. So uh, as far as flooding goes, uh, I'm running out of time, but uh. You know, adding some retention systems is, is important. And also one thing too, when we do work. Uh, we got to make sure we're, we're doing it correctly. Uh, I was just in a cul-de-sac where we did some work and the slope wasn't right and it's causing some issues. So making sure that's done right.
I'm sorry, Mr. Centers, your time is up. Okay, our next question, we start with Mr. Donovan. And it pertains to seniors. Uh, do you feel that we are doing enough, providing enough services for seniors? With people aging in place, uh, is there transportation available, various? With people aging in place, is there transportation available, various senior center services and such available? What can you do to improve that if you feel there are not?
Growing our seniors and family programming is is very important. Matter of fact, today, myself, along with two of my council colleagues with us tonight, we had hosted an event, a luncheon for our seniors to get them out. With all the COVID things going on, it's it's been frustrating for our senior population, our most vulnerable community that has been here and dedicated their livelihoods to our community, to really enjoy the outdoors. So we felt it was very important to host the event for them and saluting to our seniors and to really give back and just enjoy that kind of camaraderie that that we as human beings like. Our seniors, we're constantly looking at programs for our seniors. Our senior center is, does a wonderful job of offering events and and getting our seniors to have fun. Think us as a city of Livonia just do a good job offering our community residents different fun activities. But when our seniors, you want to make sure that you're offering diverse programs, but something that makes sense to them and something that relates to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Morgan.
Yes, I think the city of Livonia has an exceptional senior program. And I think that we have quite a few activities that the seniors can do. Places to go, our senior center, our rec center, walking trails, senior living areas. Also, our our busing system for the seniors is appears to be very convenient. I've talked to several seniors that seem to love how our city handles moving them from place to place. When they need it, they can get it. And we, I think there's so many activities that they're able to do throughout the city and they're able to get there with our busing system. Which makes it an excellent city for seniors, along with all the medical facilities and everything for aging, our aging seniors in our community. Thank you.
Ms. Mazinski, same question?
Yes, so I think Livonia has a great community for seniors, but some of the things that people have told me as I've talked to them is one, they love an indoor walking trail. You know, obviously you don't have as many malls as we used to. And there's not a current walking trail in the current senior center, maybe in the next senior center, but perhaps we can expand a service at the or at the rec center so that seniors could walk in the morning at a lower rate than a standard membership. Another thing that people express concern about is the number of, you know, independent senior, just smaller housing options that are available. So as we're looking at new housing in the city, perhaps looking at ways that we can make more options for people who are aging out of their large family homes to kind of again, open up space for new younger families and allow seniors to stay. And then finally, the buses are great, but seniors sometimes have children in their care. And so opening up our buses so that they could bring their grandchildren with them could be very helpful.
Thank you. Ms. Toy.
Thank you. We've always done an outstanding job with our seniors, the mobile ones. Where my concern is the immobile senior that are in their home where some of their children or whoever are taking care of them. As was pointed out, when power outages go out, and I had a personal experience with this, my mother was on an air mattress because of cancer. And when that power went out, she hit springs. She wasn't hitting air. And so subsequently, we need to know those kinds of things so that we have an emergency situation like that that we can help folks that are in their home with medical conditions or just with other challenges that may be relevant. We have an older population here in Livonia and they're aging in and out of their homes and in and out of their family situations. We have to be cognizant of that as we move on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jolly.
Thank you, ma'am. So I, I, like many of us cherish our seniors and I I respect everything that they brought to the table for us in our community. One of the things though we need to recognize here is yes, we do have excellent senior services in the city. They can always stand to get better. But at the same time, Livonia doesn't stop being a home for senior citizens because they become senior citizens. We need to break down these barriers to keep them in a separate segment by themselves altogether as seniors. And make sure that they feel welcome in our community at large and make sure that the young, the old, the middle aged, everybody else are collaborating together to continue to make this the home for everybody. I think when we're talking about improvements to the to the senior center, whether it's a new building or improving the old building. We need to hear from the senior citizens directly. We need to hear what their needs are. We had this lunch today and listen, the ability to talk to them and hear their experience and their wants and their needs, it's priceless. If we want to make a difference, that's where it starts. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Centers.
Yeah, I want to just kind of expand on what Jim was just saying. As a member of the Commission on Aging, we're looking at this new senior center development. And just last couple of months ago, we went ahead and we approved some focus groups. And that'll be taking time to listen to our senior community, find out exactly what kind of programming they needs, what kind of needs that we're not meeting right now, what is the potential there to make the engagement even better. We want all of our seniors to to see themselves in a in the senior facilities and feel like they want to use them. One thing that also is just really great for our seniors is we have great public safety here in Livonia. We have EMTs who are who are our firefighters. So when we, they have health challenges, having someone there that can provide medical care in case of an emergency, I think is super important.
Thank you. Mr. Overwater.
So I do think Livonia does a great job, but I I also believe that there's nothing that cannot be improved. My father died a little over a year ago and now my mother is living in a house in Dearborn that's much too large. And at some point she knows she's going to have to move and and she was looking at Livonia as a possible place. She expressed some serious concerns about its accessibility. So I think those are things that we need to work on. We need to make sure that there is more housing that's accessible for seniors. We need to work on our neighborhoods to ensure that they are not only walkable, but also wheelchair accessible. In addition to that, we need to make sure that our public buildings are ADA compliant. And I know that's a, that's not an easy thing to fix, but that's something that's important. And and there are easier things that we can do. I've I've been to our parks and noticed that that we put out, you know, porta potties there. And they're not wheelchair accessible. And that's a simple thing. Why, why buy one? Why rent one that isn't? It's a very easy thing to do. So I think we need to work with the stakeholders and the seniors.
Thank you. Your time is up, Mr. Overwater.
Thank you, ma'am.
Our next question, we will begin with Mr. Morgan. And this question is, do you see Livonia as a welcoming community to all? What are your thoughts on improving equal housing opportunities in Livonia to bridge the gap, both financially and opportunities for single family homes, apartments, areas that, you know, one person could move into or just a single mom with her children could move into?
Yes, I I absolutely see Livonia as a welcoming community. We have strived over the last 25 years to make Livonia a place that families will come to. Seniors will live out their life here. Families will grow. And I think that the city of Livonia works very hard consistently to provide senior housing, new homes for younger families. And we, we really work very hard to make sure that we have a arms wide open community. So we, we would love to expand on that. And I will work hard to make sure that we continue to do that. Thank you.
Ms. Mazinski.
And in my personal experience, Livonia has been very welcoming to me, but I know that not everyone feels that way. And I think it's really important that we do a good job communicating to people that we are a welcoming community. I would imagine a lot of people don't know that we have public housing here in Livonia and it's fantastic. I I grew up in public housing in Livonia and it's not for, you know, certain types of people. It's for people who need help and we need to be able to offer and provide people with the help that they need so that they come here and that they know that they're welcomed and that our residents don't have a misperception of what these things mean. You know, I think that that is the biggest thing is again, communication and talking and being clear. That public housing doesn't mean you're making poor neighborhoods. It means that you are helping families who need it and why somebody is low income. There's a lot of reasons and that shouldn't prevent them from living in our community.
Thank you, Ms. Toy.
Thank you very much. I believe we are a welcoming community. We probably need to go further than what we have been doing. And some of those are, have been stated already. But particularly, we do have in the Livonia 21, now some new zoning where I think we can address better some of those housing needs. We do get federal funds for HUD HUD housing in a lot of our seniors and others that live in them and enjoy the services that they do provide and the transportation out of many of those areas as well. We have a lot more in common than we don't uncommon. And I think the key is, as was stated, is communication. Getting people into groups and asking them what their needs are, what they want. I'm experiencing that as I try and navigate my three quarters of an acre in Livonia. It's getting more difficult as I need stronger glasses, I believe. No, just joking, but honestly. There becomes a need and we got to be there and answer those questions. Thank you.
Mr. Jolly.
Thank you, ma'am. So the Livonia Housing Commission supports and supplies a fair amount of senior housing. But they also utilize community development block grants, federal monies that are used to support housing for lower income families and to take parcels of land and houses that are rough and fix them up and sell them at zero profit to people to welcome them into our community. I think when we're looking at the situation of housing in Livonia, we do need to find that balance of people being able to step down in square footage. We need to find opportunities for people to buy into our community. When we're talking about whether or not Livonia is a welcoming community, I I believe wholeheartedly that it is. I believe if you go to any event in Livonia this weekend, you're going to feel welcome. People are going to smile at you. They're going to say hello. They're going to genuinely care about how you are and how you're doing, that you are doing well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Centers.
Yeah, I actually, a lot of what Laura Toy said resonated with me. And I think, you know, we have to be thoughtful and what I like about Division 21 is that it is thoughtful about the whole, whole lifespan of your, your opportunity to live in Livonia from when you're young to when you're older. And, you know, thinking about my experience, we, we started out, my wife and I, and we were, we were pretty broke. We couldn't afford a, a single family home. We started off in our apartment. We went to a condo. Now we're in a single family home. At some point, we will probably want to go into something that is more accessible. So we have to think about housing for all families, but also all stages of life.
Thank you. Mr. Centers.
He doesn't get to go again.
Yeah, I can repeat it. I don't have anything, I don't have anything new though.
He doesn't, he doesn't.
He didn't even take his whole 60 seconds. You're going to give him another minute.
I'm so busy looking at the questions. Mr. Overwater.
Thank you. I I do believe Livonia is a welcoming community. I wouldn't live here if it wasn't. And I know I certainly have felt welcome from the time that I moved here. I also know that there are other people who don't feel welcome. That they are aware of a reputation that Livonia, that that they believe Livonia has and has had. And they haven't been convinced otherwise. And that's why we need to take steps to do that. I think public housing is a great thing. I work with indigent people every single day and I know that helping people who are low income gives them a chance to be more successful. It gives them a chance to get on their feet and succeed. And that's why I know it's important to do that. But I also grew up in Dearborn where, you know, we've had to adjust over, over the years to a changing demographic and a changing community and it's made our community stronger there. So I'm sure Livonia can do the same, but I think we need to continue to take steps to make sure that people know that this is the welcoming community that it is.
Mr. Donavick.
Thank you. I believe Livonia is a welcoming community. I'm the son of immigrant parents that came to this country in the eighties. And I grew up in, you know, LPS schools and and I I've met so many awesome people and diverse people. You go to any event in the community, events in our parks, events at our different community centers. Everybody's smiling, everybody's happy, working with our private partnerships, the Chamber of Commerce is constantly holding events to to bridge gaps, to work with one another regardless of what we look like, regardless of where we come from. At the end of the day, we're all humans. We're all, we all should love each other and work together. So I think Livonia does a good job of of working with other folks from all walks of life to to be that welcoming, family's first community. In terms of a second part of your question, Livonia's got a big program, the CDBG Fund from a federal program that works on trying to identify the the low income areas and welcome other folks to our community that may necessarily not be able to afford a $300,000 house. I definitely can't afford it, so. Thank you.
We will be starting with Ms. Mazinski. What is your current view of the policing in America today? What are your thoughts on the Livonia Police Department moving to a department with more engaging community policing as their format?
I think police do a hard job. I think they do an important job and they keep us safe and they go towards danger and not away from it. And I think their job is harder these days because, again, everyone's emotions are really high into the surface and we're really divided. And we can, we don't have, again, conversations which I think are so important. So our Livonia Police Department, I think they do a great job. They do the job that they've been asked to do and they do it really well. But I'd love to see more community policing. I was at the food truck rally at the rec center with my family a couple of weeks ago and I would have loved to see the police there, you know, not because they were needed for security reasons but as a community reason so that the kids could see the police officers and say hi. And so that people who may not feel comfortable around police would have the opportunity to engage in different ways. So I think there's always room for improvement in all areas of life, but I do support and appreciate our Livonia Police Department.
Thank you. Ms. Toy.
Thank you. Certainly, we love our police. I was telling the new chief the other day, what every resident Livonia needs to do is go through the Community Police Academy. It is outstanding. It goes from everything, from what our SWAT team does to what the jails look like, to go to the firing range, to even do a ride along. I have not done the ride along yet. But it's eye opening, it's enlightening. And I know many of us on the council have been on that and any resident can sign up for that. They offer it once a year. But more than that, we now have hired social workers to go out with our police. And I, I'm hoping that will make a good difference in the way we handle situations. Because I think a lot of it, the education piece belongs to our community colleges and our universities as they go through their criminal justice program. I know they get some of that, but it's helpful because they have to wear many hats in the line of duty. So my hat's off to them. They do a terrific job. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Toy. Mr. Jolly.
Thank you, ma'am. So let's get something a little clear here. Livonia is a community policing agency. That's what their main charge is. That's what they've always done. The Livonia Police send out a community resource officer to almost every single block party we have in the community. They host Safety Town events. They are completely engaged in our community and they have the pulse of our community. They're in our schools. They're resources for our students. I've worked for the last 15 years with a very close relationship with the Livonia Police Department. As a court officer, I had a key to the back door of the police station. I was a magistrate and on city council, I've seen the work that they've done firsthand. We have a professional police department. There are challenges in the world and oftentimes the world is unsafe. And we need to give the resources that the police and other safety officials need to make sure that they're able to protect our community and to protect themselves. The social workers, it it's a great new option and hopefully we can kind of stem some of the need that the community has in a different way. And we can support our officers along the way. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Centers.
Yeah, I, I I do think we have a good police department here in Livonia and I do see them around quite a bit. I, I, being on the school board, I I do see them at our events. I see them in our schools. And additionally, a lot of our officers live in Livonia. They shop at the same places we shop. And additionally, a lot of our officers live in Livonia. They shop at the same places we shop. They engage with their neighbors. So, um, in that sense, I, I think they are very engaged. But like any industry, things are gonna continue to, uh, adapt as time goes on. And, uh, you saw that in Livonia where, uh, there's broad support for social workers to identify needs where, uh, you know, a police officer may need some more expertise. That someone who has the skillset to connect people with resources. So, you know, we have to be agile. We have to, uh, grow as lot with the, with the profession. And, uh, you know, I could think we'll continue to have a good police force here in Livonia.
Thank you. Mr. Overwater.
Police officers have an exceptionally difficult job. My father was a reserve police officer for thirty years. It wasn't even his main job, but I still got to see that. And I've worked in the criminal justice system myself for almost fifteen years. I've seen over a thousand hours of police video and I've seen police officers at work in person. And I've seen the ways that they can make situations better and the way they can make situations worse. And when you see an officer who can de-escalate a difficult situation, who can handle a person in crisis and make that situation better and make that person safe, it's almost as if they did a magic trick. It's exceptional. And that's the sort of thing that we need and we need more of. Livonia has a good police department. It has community policing. We need more. Social workers are a great step in that direction, but that needs to be continued. Livonia has a reputation and some people still believe that its police department is gonna target certain groups of people and we need to combat that and show them that's no longer true.
Thank you, Mr. Donavich. Mr. Morgan.
I'm Mr. Overwater. I think.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms., I'm sorry.
Donovan is actually next.
He is next. Mr. Don, Don, Donovan is next.
Thank you. So Livonia has one of the most professional police departments in the country. I know, cause as a reserve police officer for many years, every other police agency looks up to Livonia Police Department and the exceptionalism that they bring behind the job. When you talk about community policing, uh, Livonia has taken effort after effort to work in the community, to be a part of different community events. There is not an event that I see that Livonia police officers don't attend. You may not always see them, but they're always there. Even when they're down, some thirty police officers right now, they still make a point to get out there, to attend events, talk to people. They offer programs, whether it be the civilian academy, whether it be the passport to safety, whether it be open houses at their police departments. During COVID, a lot of our birthdays were different. But Livonia police officers made it a point to drive by homes, uh, and to turn on their lights and, and talk to the little kids out in the streets. Uh, and what an amazing thing that is for a little kid that's on their birthday that life's been so different. But our police officers constantly make an effort to, to build relationships in our community and I think they do a great job at it.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan. Mr. Morgan.
Yes, this is, uh, a, uh, topic that's very close to my heart considering I've spent twenty-five, the last twenty-five years of my life being a police officer. And I can tell you that we have an exceptional, amazing police department. We are out in the community consistently. That is part of our job. We stop at local businesses. We talk to citizens. Even on traffic stops, you don't have to give tickets. You can just talk to the citizen and, and, you know, make a good contact, uh, from a bad one. Things in Livonia, uh, the police department, we work very hard. We have all these, uh, the community events. We do the shop with the cop. We do, um, uh, the spree. We're out in the community. And, uh, there's, we can always work harder, but we do an excellent job of reaching out and engaging with the community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Unfortunately, that was our last question for this evening. So, um, with that, we will be going now to the closing statements from each of you. And as I stated before, we reverse the order. So, Mr. Morgan, you will go first with your closing statement.
Yes, thank you. Um, well, thank you for having me here tonight. I spent twenty-five years of my life, my heart, my family in this community. I love this community. My family loves it. This is, uh, this is very exciting. I think, um, that I will, uh, we're gonna live here as, you know, and for the rest of our life, if I can. The bottom line is I have the experience. I, I'm very engaged in the community, been working here for twenty-five years. And what I'm asking is that people look into that, look into my background. I'll look on my website, check me out. The bottom line is I'm committed to this community and I want to continue to serve. I want the citizens of Livonia to hire me back and I will do a great job for you. That's my guarantee. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Donovan.
Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you tonight. I am dedicated to my job, serving on city council and thankful for the opportunity to run for reelection. As a son of immigrant parents who gave their children a chance of better life, I'm grateful to serve the community that's given my family everything we have. If you elect me again, I will always support our first responders who keep us safe every day and our depart, Department of Public Workers who maintain our city. I'll work on reducing the blight in vacant buildings, revitalization of the East Side Livonia, and be a good steward of our tax dollars by limited government and supporting our parks and community programs. My name is Rob Donovan and I am respectfully asking you for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Overwater.
Thank you. I've spent my entire career helping people. And I want to help all the people who live, work and play here in Livonia. As a councilman, I will listen to you. I will listen to experts and I will try to make the decisions that do the most good for the most people. If you have a question, I encourage you, please go to my website, go to my Facebook page and ask me. I will answer you always. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Centers.
Thank you. Uh, this was a really engaging night. The questions were interesting and, uh, really insightful and I, I appreciate the opportunity. I've had a privilege to serve this city for seven and a half years as elected school board member. I'm really proud of my reputation of someone that can work with people from a diverse set of viewpoints to get things done. I'm excited at the opportunity to do that on the city council level. So, uh, I'd be honored to have the votes of the people listening today and to serve on city council. And, uh, again, thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Jolly.
Thank you, ma'am. So I have a, a proven record of leadership in service to our community for the last fifteen years. I've worked consistently to do what is best for our community. And I focused my attention around that exactly, what is best for Livonia. I've worked with people on the right, people on the left and everybody in between. I, I've built relationships and that's what this is all about, building relationships that you can trust so that we can move Livonia together, forward and build upon the great history that we have and the great community that we have. I'll congratulate all of you on a good job tonight. I think we did well. I think our community is in good hands. Uh, I would ask the watchers out there, the people who are viewing this, uh, to please consider voting for me. I'd like to finish what I started on city council and I'd like to continue working for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Toy.
Yes, I want to thank the League again and I also want to thank all the candidates that participated tonight in this very informative forum. You know, I, I, I really feel strongly about listening to residents when they bring issues before our council. They call us on the phone. They send us emails. Our goal is common. It's one to foster our community, for people to live, raise their families here and retire here and also work here, um, in a safe, affordable place that has excellent city services, um, that has amenities that people want. And that is welcoming and provides meaningful coalitions so all can participate. I am proud to call Livonia my home for many years and the many people we all know and love. And I am humbled to represent them on our, our local government. So I'm asking you to vote for Laura Toy in November. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Toy. And Ms. Bazinski.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this event tonight. I really appreciate your time, um, and effort. Because we need organizations like this, nonpartisan organizations to help connect us to our government. That's so important. That's my number one priority in this campaign is talking to as many people as I can. I have a Love Livonia survey on my website, asking people, what are the amenities you use? What are your priorities in the city? What do you like and what would you like to see changed? I'd love to talk to anyone who wants to. If you want to call or text, my number is seven three four six seven four oh nine four eight. My email is kerry dot m dot bazinski at gmail dot com. I respond to everyone. I don't want to fight. So we can have a civil conversation. We can talk about anything I mentioned today, if you have concerns or follow-up questions. If you just want to share what your vision for Livonia is, I want to hear that. And I'd love your vote on November second, um, or even starting next week with early voting. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much, candidates. I would like to thank the League of Women Voter Member Valerie Nelson for being our timer this evening and helping produce this. The forum has been recorded and can soon be viewed on the League's website, which is LWVnorthwestwayne.org. We also thank the candidates who are running for office. They are asking for your support as they seek a job in the public service sector and we hope voters will listen to their views. We also appreciate the voters in the city of Livonia who are watching this forum to learn about their choices for the November second ballot. All of these candidates are also invited to participate in the League of Women Voters Voter Guide, a publication that you can access online by visiting vote four one one dot org. And I hope each of you have already done that. The general election day is November the second. If you are not registered to vote, you can do so up through election day. Within fourteen days of the election, registration must be done at the office of your city clerk. The polls are open from seven to eight P M, seven A M to eight P M. But all registered voters can vote early by absentee ballot. Remember that you first must fill out and return an absentee ballot application to your city or township clerk before a ballot can be mailed to you. If you need an absentee ballot application, please contact your city clerk. This concludes our forum this evening. Thank you, candidates, for participating in our democracy as it is not a spectator sport. Thank you again, candidates, for participating.
Thank you.